Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Washoe County Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022. And before we go into the actual opening of the agenda, we have some information we'd like to share about some technical issues that we have.
For the record, this is Recording Secretary Lacy Kerfoot. We are currently experiencing technical difficulties with the video connection between Zoom and the chambers. The audio connection is not affected. Public participating on Zoom will be able to hear what is happening in chambers, and those in chambers will be able to hear public comment provided via Zoom. Public participating on Zoom will be able to view the presentations that are shared by staff and applicants. However, they will not be able to see the video feed of the planning commissioners at the dais via Zoom. If you are on Zoom and would like to see the video feed, you may do so through the Washoe County Live Webstream or the Washoe County YouTube channel. The URLs are available on the agenda, and in just a moment, I'll be putting up a slide that also has those URLs visible. Thank you.
Okay, and to go along with that, before we go further, as she said, this meeting will be held in the county commission chambers and via Zoom webinar. To participate via Zoom, please log into the Zoom webinar at the following link, https://us02web.zoom.us/j/84272659406, or you can join by typing zoom.us into your computer browser, clicking "Join a Meeting" on the Zoom website, and entering the meeting ID number of 842-7265-9406. Note, this option will require a computer with audio and visual capabilities. Alternatively, you can join by telephone by dialing 1-669-900-98, excuse me, 9128, entering the meeting ID of 842-7265-9406, and pressing pound. This meeting will be televised live and replayed on Washoe Channel at https://www.washoecounty.gov/mgrsoff/communications-wct-live.php, and will also be found on YouTube. So moving along.
And all the, oh, excuse me, Jen Gustafson for the record, thank you. I'd just like to remind all the planning commissioners today to please state your name before you speak. And obviously, that's important all the time, but considering the fact that if people are on Zoom, they may not be able to see you on the dais, although, of course, they can see you through the Live Webstream and other manners, it's important to just state who you are for the record. So I'd like to remind all the planning commissioners to please do that throughout the meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gustafson. So call to order, and we can do it. Order, adjournment of quorum, please.
Yes, Larry Chesney.
Present.
Sarah Chavaleczeck.
Present.
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Michael Flick.
Present.
Kate Nelson.
Present.
Larry Payton did indicate that he would not be in attendance this evening, and Pat Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Pat, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pat. Ms. Gustafson, if we could get the ethics law announcement, please?
Certainly. Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you've received a gift or loan; number two, you have a pecuniary interest; number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or number four, if you've provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter being considered here today, please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, please disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gustafson. Secretary Lloyd, if we could have the appeal procedure, please.
Of course. Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed, in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd, and this is Chair Doncic, and I'm going to read about public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the agenda. However, action may not be taken on any matter raised during this public comment period until the matter specifically is set on the agenda as an action item. Comments are to be made to the Planning Commission as a whole. Ladies, do we have public comment in chambers or via Zoom?
Yes, we do have public comment in chambers. First, I have Emanuela Heller McNilich.
Good evening. My name is Emanuela Heller. I want to speak to point C there, so I roll back in Verdi. I cannot make finding one. This is not working.
I can click through it, sorry.
Yeah, gotta click fast. The amendment is not consistent with the master plan. The city has put a mixed employment land use over that land. This translates into commercial in the county, but this was not implemented because S3, who is the potential buyer but not even the owner, initiated the SOI rollback to VIPAS legislator. Are we regressing or are we progressing? So when we roll back into the county, we can either go back to a zoning that was 40 or 50 years ago, or we can also look around what has changed in the meantime and maybe adjust our zoning. And the City of Reno did that and realized it's not industrial. I cannot make finding two. It's incompatible with the surrounding land uses. As the city decided in 2019, they decided there cannot be a development going in because of incompatibility of surrounding areas and traffic. Also recently, the Board of Adjustment recently turned down the SUP for grading. Also, it is incompatible surroundings. We will hear later about traffic and safety, and there's also like, can you click faster, please, pedestrian. There's a proposed trailhead, the bike trail in surrounding residential areas. Mogul is mostly residential since decades. I also cannot make finding four mostly because of transportation and traffic. I also cannot make finding five. It's absolutely undesired pattern there, impairing the natural resources. All three general Verdi plans findings are not met. The first one, vision, let's look at the vision. Private-public development should respect scenic rural heritage, conserve a natural scenic cultural resources. Recently, there has been a marker removed illegally. It's just above that land, talking about prehistoric petrocliffs, Washoe Indian artifacts on those flats, immigrant trail marker Lincoln freeway reference. Point B, let's look at the Verdi area plan. It talks totally about rural and non-commercial, absolutely not industrial use there. And point C, the amendment will absolutely conflict with the public's health, safety, or welfare. The Verdi community plan maintenance findings are also not met. A, there's no sufficient infrastructure and resource capacity, and C, it talks about a traffic analysis that has been conducted. We would like to see that. Would be curious about your discussion about that, and there was something about that being waived. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, I have Karen Niedhold.
We're gonna try some new technology. Hello, my name is Karen Niedhold. I am a resident of Mogul since 1998. I want to tell you a little story of Mogul area. In this map, it's a map I created, oh, how long ago was that? We've been dealing with this since 2018. If you see, the white is all residential. The green is all public land, open space. We've got the Blue River, the Black Highway, and the large development. Now, adjacent to it is the self-storage, which is a small parcel which was developed in 1994. But this area has been residential since 1920, and homes were built from 1920 into 1950. The 1980s were quite the building boom in Mogul area, and we still have a 41-home project being put in the very center, upper center of this area. What is not shown on any map in the staff report is the intersection under the highway that all traffic must go through. So with all the trucks going through this area, we have a significant safety problem. Also, the staff report does not show the Washoe County Parks Plan. There is, let me see if I can do this with, I don't know if you can see that right there. That is a proposed trailhead. So there is river access in this area. You can see on this map the residential areas by the river. It's kind of interesting. And the access is all through a single-point access. So to put an active industrial complex on that red spot right there would significantly increase traffic. We have school students who must go under the highway to get to their school buses. We have cyclists going through our neighborhoods, in our neighborhood daily, especially in the weekends, and we have the Tahoe Pyramid Trail that goes through here. So the staff report did not cover all of the points and did not actually contact all of the interested parties in this area. So in the future, when we're discussing this area and we're discussing the traffic impact, I want you to remember this map and see how much white is there. Those are all residential properties. See how much green is there. The light green, white is residential, green is open space.
I apologize.
Oh, there we go.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could, and this is for anyone showing items on the overhead, if you could just email anything that you show, that you've put up there for me as inclusion on the record. Yes, thank you so much. And I have my email here if you'd like it.
I have no further public comment in chambers.
Any comment via Zoom?
I do not, oh, there we go. I have so far one hand raised, Rachel Solomon. Give me one moment, and we'll get her up. And any other folks that were planning to give public comment via Zoom, please raise your hand so that I know to call on you. All right, Ms. Solomon, I'm going to allow you to speak. If you could please, okay, unmute, and you have the floor.
Hi, my name for the record is Rachel Solomon. I live at 80 Lemming Drive, which is five homes up from the intersection that Karen Niedhold was just discussing. Five homes up on Lemming Drive from the freeway, and I have children who walk to the school bus. They don't have to go under the intersection of the freeway to get to the school bus. They are out every single day walking to the school bus. They also go underneath that exact freeway intersection to go see their friends who live on the other side of the freeway in Mogul. And honestly, it terrifies me to think of an industrial complex going up in my neighborhood in the area where my children are riding their bikes. If we have big rigs and giant trucks coming through here, it's just not going to be a safe place for them to be anymore. We've lived here for nine years. My children have grown up their entire lives in this home, and I don't want my neighborhood to be ruined by corporate interests from, you know, other places that don't even live here and want to build these terrible things. Don't fit in with the rest of our neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, any more public comment at this time?
I have no further hands raised via Zoom.
No further public comments.
All right, this is Francine Doncic, Chair, and I am closing public comment at this time. And moving on to our next item on the agenda is the approval of the May 3rd, 2022 agenda. If I could get a motion for approval.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Chesney moved to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chesney.
Tuesday, April 6th.
Agenda?
Pardon?
You said minutes. Agenda? You said minutes. We're talking agenda.
Oh, the agenda. Yeah, okay, move to the agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chesney. Do we have a second?
Pat Phillips, second.
Thank you, Pat. Ms. Phillips, we have a second. This is Commissioner Doncic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Next, this is Commissioner Doncic again. Next item is item seven, approved.
Okay.
Excuse me, I'm going, this is Commissioner, excuse me, we're gonna, Commissioner Doncic, I'm going to try another mic that isn't going to blow our ears off, hopefully. And next item on the agenda is item seven, approval of April 5 draft minutes for our last meeting. If someone can join a motion.
Commissioner Chesney moved to approve the minutes of Tuesday, April 5th, 2022.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Nelson, I'll second.
Commissioner Nelson, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstains? Thank you. Minutes are approved. We're moving right along to our next, this is Commissioner Doncic. We're moving right along to public hearings, item 8A. Secretary Lloyd, if you could read that into the record, please?
Certainly. This item, item 8A, is for an abandonment, case number WAB 220002, the Chestnut Vine Drive and Cloud Berry Drive, which is located within the Sugarloaf Ranch Estates. It's for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an abandonment, slight relocation, and subsequent reoffer of dedication of an undeveloped roadway easement at the intersection of Chestnut Vine Drive and Cloud Berry Drive within the approved Sugarloaf Ranch Estates subdivision. That's case number TM 16002. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner Roger Pelham.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Again, for the record, Roger Pelham with Washoe County Planning. This is an abandonment. That's where the county gives up a little bit of right-of-way, and one of the findings is if they provide additional right-of-way to take that place. And in fact, that's what's happening here, and this is a very minor one, in fact. This is an offer for an abandonment and a rededication of a slight realignment at one proposed intersection. Nothing's actually there right now, but the four lots surrounding it were recorded, and when final design came, well, it turns out they were just a few feet off. This is, again, undeveloped at this time, but within the proposed Sugarloaf Ranch subdivision. Whoops. And what we see here in this exhibit is the blue areas in the hashed, with the blue arrows, I should say, pointing to those two little hashed areas. That's the area to be abandoned. And then the corresponding strips on the right-hand side with the two little red arrows, that's to be provided. And really, this is a minor realignment, but one of those cases where abandonment is the appropriate process to make this happen. Again, nothing's developed there at this time. All of the folks in the surrounding area, that is to say, that were adjacent to it, have been notified, as shown on the public most map here. Staff is of the opinion that the three appropriate findings can be made, and I am recommending approval, and I am available for any questions that you might have. We have the possible motion provided in the staff report.
Francine Doncic for the record. I'm sorry, Francine Doncic for the record. Thank you, Roger. At this point, I don't believe there's any other presentation, just yours, correct, Roger? So is there any, ladies, is there any public comment on this item?
I have no public, no public comment for this, no public comment for item in chambers.
And I have no hands raised via Zoom.
All right. Bringing it back to closing public comment, bringing it back to the commission, are there any questions for staff or anything at this point? Hearing, no questions. I will make, does anyone mind to make a motion at this time?
Commissioner Chesney. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number WAB 2222 for Silverado Silver Canyon LLC with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110.806.20.
Commissioner Doncic here. Do we have a second on this motion?
Commissioner Phillips, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Phillips. At this time, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Moving along to the next agenda item, item 8B. Secretary Lloyd, if you could read it into the record, please?
Yes, this is tentative subdivision map, case number WTM 22003, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve a 48-lot residential common open space tentative subdivision map with lots ranging in size from 4,999 square feet to 15,058 square feet on one parcel totaling 18.2 acres. To approve associated major grading for 10.26 acres of ground disturbance, including 43,500 cubic yards of cut and 49,900 cubic yards of fill for the proposed tentative map, and to modify the development code standard found in WCC 110 438 45C, which provides that finished grading shall not vary from the natural slope by more than 10 feet. And I did want to make an announcement. Our planner, Chris Bronzick, was recently promoted to senior planner. He's our most recent senior.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And Chris will be presenting this item for Washoe County.
Chris, before we go forward, I just want to ask commissioners if they have any disclosures, disclosures, either ethics or expertise at this time?
No.
Hearing none. Chris, thank you.
Chris Bronzick, Washoe County Planning. So as was mentioned, this is a request for a 48-lot residential common open space tentative subdivision map with lots ranging from just around 5,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet on one parcel totaling 18.2 acres, and to approve associated major grading for 10.26 acres of disturbance with 43,500 cubic yards of cut and 45,900 cubic yards of fill. So this is located in the Sun Valley Planning Area. This is located directly west of Lois Allen Elementary School and off of West Second Avenue. So this is primarily for a single-family detached proposal with those 48 lots. The applicant is proposing a boundary line adjustment as part of this process, which will take that 18.27 acres down to 17.2 acres. The existing zoning is medium-density suburban, so MDS, and it's allowed for three dwellings per acre. At the boundary line adjustment parcel size of 17.2 acres, this allows for 51.66 lots, and the applicant, as of now, is proposing 48, which is under. So this parcel is also located within the Sun Valley Suburban Character Management Area, and this SEMA is a designated growth area for the Sun Valley Area Plan. So as mentioned with the grading, this proposal, this request, is in line with very similar grading counts and grading efforts associated with other tentative maps within the Sun Valley Planning Area. The maximum slope that they are proposing is three-to-one slopes, which is mandated under code. However, there are two lots that have a little bit of added steepness to it. And so those lots are 14 and 15, which will have retaining walls and terracing associated with them, but the maximum wall height that is being proposed is six feet, which is also allowed by code. So this is a site plan of the proposal. There are trail connections to the south that the developer is proposing as part of that common open space element for encouraging a sense of community. So the parcel, as is, has a master plan designation of suburban residential, as do the parcels to the north and west. The parcels to the, I'm sorry, the north and east. The parcel to the west is Red Hill Open Space, and it is designated open space with a regulatory zone as well as the master plan. The regulatory zone to the east is Lois Allen Elementary School, and it is PSP. So the topography of the site is varied. It does include significantly steep areas. These steep areas are proposed as common open space, and then there are areas, of course, that are flatter. This is most suitable for development, and this is where the proposed tentative subdivision is slated to be. These areas that are greater than 30% slopes are required to be designated as common open space and only use paths, trails, or outdoor recreation use types on them. So the applicant did provide a slope analysis map for staff as part of the requirements for hillside development. As you can see, the green is 0 to 15% slopes. This is most suitable for development under our area plans and code, and red is that 30% that is just not suitable. Utility service for this proposed subdivision would come through Sun Valley GID. They'll supply the water and wastewater. Other utilities will include gas, electric, and solid waste disposal, all of which are available for this area. So the site is located off of West Second. There are three access points that are being proposed, two which are to the north off West Second and one off Whitmore Way to the east. The internal roads are proposed to be dedicated to the county and turned over to public roadways. The traffic study that was provided indicated 452 average daily trips with 34 morning peak hour trips and 45 PM peak hour trips. This does not constitute a requirement for a full traffic study because it did not hit the thresholds. So with this proposal, the applicant is proposing to dedicate roughly seven acres of common open space to Washoe County Parks to be included in the Red Hill Open open space to Washoe County Parks to be included in the Red Hill Open Space. As part of the conditions of approval, our parks planner did provide multiple options and requirements related to that proposed dedication. The applicant will be required to create either a homeowners association or a landscape maintenance agreement to maintain the common open space, whether it gets dedicated to the county or not. And as part of all common open space developments, they are required, regardless of ownership of what land gets dedicated or not, to maintain a three-year maintenance plan and permanent preservation of ongoing maintenance. So I mentioned the common open space aspect of this development. So common open space is intended to set forth regulations that allow for the variance related to the lot size, as well as density transfer, and it's intended to preserve open space, protect natural and scenic resources, achieve a more efficient use of land, minimize road building, and encourage a sense of community. In the review, staff has concluded that the application meets the purpose of Article four oh eight. So the applicant did host a neighborhood meeting in person at Hobie's Casino on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. It was held at six P M. It lasted roughly an hour. There were nine members of the public that participated, and a hundred and thirty-one notices were sent out. Washoe County did notice a hundred and fifty-four parcels within a thousand feet. The findings are plain consistency, design of improvements, type of development, availability of services, fish or wildlife, public health easements, access dedications, and energy. Staff is able to make those required findings. Staff is recommending approval with conditions, and I provided a possible motion above. I'm available for any questions you may have.
This is Chair Doncic.
This is Chair Doncic. Thank you, Chris, very much. I bring it back to the, do we have any public comment on this item, ladies in chambers or via Zoom?
I have no public comment in chambers.
And I have no hands raised via Zoom.
Thank you, ladies. Hearing that, I will close public comment and bringing it back to the commission for any questions of staff.
Chair, I do have an applicant that has a presentation.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
We're in agreement with the review that staff has given, the recommendation and the findings. Oh, for the record, thank you, Pat. For the record, Dave Snellgrove, I'm planning and right-of-way manager with C F A, here working with Loomis and Associates, who's done a great job on the engineering. And also in the audience tonight is Mr. Ron Bath with Salmon Point Development. He's the property owner. I'd be happy to go through my presentation if you'd like. I know you've got a big room here, and people are really anxious to talk about another project. So I'll leave it up to you whether you want to hear. We are in agreement with the staff's recommendation, their review and analysis, and in agreement with the conditions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Doncic. Commissioner Doncic, thank you, Mr. Doncic. Are there, at this time, are there any questions for staff or the presenter at this time? Okay. And then I apologize, at that point, I would probably have to reopen public comment to see if.
Thank you. No public comment in chambers.
And no hands raised via Zoom.
Thank you very much. So hearing that, I will close the second public hearing, public comment, and bring it back to the commission for any questions for.
Thank you, Chair Doncic. This is Commissioner Chivilcheck. This is for staff. Just some clarification on the open space. It is more than just, the proposed open space includes more than just restricted slope. Is that correct?
It does.
Thank you.
This is Chair Doncic. Commissioner Flick, I believe you had a question?
Yes. Mike Flick. For those that aren't here, you mentioned that the trail system that he, that the applicant was going to go ahead and create new trails as well. Is this in addition to the proposed trails that are on the site plan?
So I actually failed to mention this in my presentation. I do have Parks Planner. I failed to mention this in my presentation, but I do have Parks Planner, Sophia Kershaman, here that can also talk on that. But my understanding is the existing trails that are there are proposed to be rerouted, and then any new additional trails would also connect into the system.
I do have one slide, actually a couple that could help illustrate that if you'd like. Like, I'd be happy to go through that and show you how we're perpetuating access to public lands, which is a requirement with subdivision. We will reroute one trail.
This is Commissioner Doncic, and we would like to see that site plan, that site changed.
We could get to it really quick, and I could show you, and also Sophia's here as well. We did a lot of work with Parks and had a lot of discussions with Sophia in terms of this making sense. I'll just go to that.
And sir, if you could just state your name for the record again.
Again, for the record, Dave Snellgrove.
Thank you.
With C F A. Let me get to my trails. Okay, this map here is just an aerial map. It shows some of the primary trails. This is not all the trails that are out there, but these are some of the more significant trails that get a lot of use. I put a circle, a red circle, around one area. That's one area where we're going to have some development go in and affect that trail. So on the next slide, uh-oh, there we go. That trail that goes to the southern end of lots fourteen, fifteen, and kind of goes out, and I've got an arrow pointed to it, that is a rerouted trail because we will go across part of that trail. So we'll perpetuate the access that's there. Right now, there will be a little bit of a different route, and working with the County Parks and Rec Department, this area, I've worked on a lot of projects where we have common open space, and they don't have the connectivity to existing public lands like this did. This one just kind of made sense to be a dedication of the land over for the public use. There was a requirement, as Mr. Broncik noted very clearly, that this be continually and perpetually maintained either by a homeowners association or a landscape maintenance association. So the maintenance of the land will remain the responsibility of the homeowners, but the actual holding of the land and the public access and all that will go over into the public realm.
Okay, so this is Mike Flick again. On the map, on the site plan that we have, I understand it's been, that one trail has been rerouted. Up above this map, for lot thirty-seven, it seems to go, and I'm assuming you're creating this, goes from lot thirty-seven to lot thirty, down to lot one, and then, I guess, off your land to the north. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've got a new road that comes through. And let me check, I think I may know the trail that you're talking about. I've got to figure out the right direction here. There we go. Now, there is a trail, if you see where the northern drainage way comes in, there's a path that goes across the property. Is that the one that you're talking about that goes over to the corner of the school?
Yes.
That'll actually end up, that's in the more developable areas of the property, and that's where the subdivision will be. So I'll go back to this map. You can see the road that goes and connects from, on the north end, that's West Second Avenue, and over on the east, that's Whitmore Way. So there will be a road with sidewalks on it, so there will still be pedestrian access routing going through there, but that area will be allotted. That footpath was just created over time as the shortest distance between two points.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Doncic for the record. Commissioners, any other questions at this time? All right. Hearing no other questions, I will bring it back to close the public hearing, and are there, do we have any motions at this time?
Chair Doncic.
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
Since we're sharing a microphone, I guess, and she's sitting right beside, this is Commissioner Chivilcheck. I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved tentative subdivision map case number W T M two-two dash zero zero three for Salmon Point Development LLC, along with the applicant's request to vary the development code standards in Washoe County Code one-one-zero dot four-three-eight dot four-five parenthetical C, with the conditions of approval included in exhibit A to this matter, having made all ten findings in accordance with Washoe County Code one-one-zero dot six-zero-eight dot two-five.
Commissioner Chesney, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Chivilcheck, and Mr. Doncic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We move on to item eight C. Secretary Lord, if you would read that into the record, please.
Yeah, this is master plan amendment, case number W M P A twenty-two zero 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 five, the Verdi S O I rollback. This is for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve a resolution initiating and adopting an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan, Verdi Area Plan, Appendix B Maps, to assign the master plan designation of industrial on two parcels, A P N's zero three eight one, one eight one zero one, and zero three eight one seven two one four, that have been removed from the city of Reno sphere of influence and returned to Washoe County's jurisdiction. And if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Any approval is subject to adoption by the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner Courtney Wyke.
Hold on a moment, Courtney. Commissioner Doncic, for the record, I need to request any disclosures by commissioners, either ethics or ex parte at this time. I just want on the record that I know one of the people that sent a letter is someone I know, but I didn't know until I read it here. And then I had someone reach out to me today just in discussion, and I told them I couldn't speak to the issue because we're having our meeting tonight. So that's all I have to say. And I also want to remind everybody that I know there's a lot involved in this, but remember, this is just a sphere of influence change. It's, there's no tentative maps, there's nothing here. It's going from the city of Reno planning to Washoe County. There is nothing, there is no tentative maps, there's no formal plans for the future, just going from the county, from the city, back into the county. So at that, at that point, thank you very much. Ms. Courtney, if you would.
Madam Chair, just a quick question about your disclosure. The individual that you said you received, I guess, in presenting public comment, was that someone that's related to you or?
No.
Okay. How do you know that person, I guess is my question.
To be honest, I know both of them through Reno Rodeo.
Okay. And to follow up, do you believe that a person that you know, that person that you know providing public comment would influence your decision in this matter in any manner?
No, Ms. Gustafson, it would not.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Commissioner. Courtney Wyke, Senior Planner, Washoe County. I'm here to present to you for your consideration, case number W M P A twenty-two dash zero zero five, for a S O I rollback in the Verdi Area Plan. The master plan amendment being proposed is in response to recent actions by the city of Reno and the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency that rolled back two parcels that were previously within the city of Reno sphere of influence that are now back in Washoe County's planning jurisdiction. The areas involved in the rollback include the two highlighted parcels in red above, totaling twenty-seven point nine eight acres. The parcels are located on the south side of Interstate eighty, off Exit seven, and north of Mogul Road. While the parcels are vacant, significant disturbance to the site has occurred as a result of the railroad, I eighty corridor, and various utility projects in the immediate vicinity. To the immediate north of the project site is Interstate eighty. To the southeast is an existing self-storage facility. To the immediate south is undeveloped land in the Union Pacific Railroad with large residential parcels south of the train tracks adjacent to the Truckee River. In two thousand and twenty-one, the Reno City Council voted in favor to remove the two subject parcels from the city of Reno sphere of influence. When parcels are returned to Washoe County's jurisdiction, Washoe County Development Code, Article one-ten point one-oh-six point three-zero, states the regulatory zone of such parcels revert to the previous Washoe County regulatory zone, in this case, industrial. A master plan category must be assigned which is compatible with the existing zoning. The master plan category of industrial is the only category that allows for the existing regulatory zone of industrial. Therefore, a master plan category of industrial is being proposed. Here is a side-by-side map of the previous Reno master plan category of mixed employment and the proposed master plan category of industrial. Nearly the entire site, immediately to, is surrounded by public semi-public facilities, which has a high compatibility rating with industrial. A small portion on the southwestern corner of the project area is adjacent to a suburban residential land use category. Both the Nevada revised statutes and Washoe County Code require a neighborhood meeting for any proposed master plan amendment. A neighborhood meeting was held via Zoom on April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at five-thirty P M. The meeting lasted an hour and fifteen minutes and had approximately twenty-two people in attendance. Predominant concerns were traffic safety-related impacts, recreational access to open space lands, and intensity of possible future uses. In addition to public feedback, at the neighborhood meeting, staff has received twelve public comments, comment letters predominantly citing many of the same concerns. A copy of each letter has been distributed to the commission and is included as part of the record for consideration. Now, we'll briefly go through each of the required findings from Article eight-twenty for a master plan amendment. Consistency with the master plan. The proposed master plan does not conflict with the policies and actions, programs of the master plan. Compatible land uses. The proposed master plan assignment of industrial will provide for land uses compatible with the immediate adjacent existing land uses and will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare. The master plan designation of industrial does not intensify the uses allowed under the existing industrial regulatory zone. Response to changing conditions. The proposed amendment is in response to the parcels removal from the city of Reno's S O I. The master plan land use category of industrial is consistent with the existing industrial regulatory zone, as discussed in the staff report, as well as the industrial land use that was historically designated on the property prior to inclusion within the city of Reno's S O I. Truckee Meadow Regional Planning Conformance Review will occur pending an approval from the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners for the master plan amendment. Availability of facilities. All needed services are in close proximity to the project area, including public safety facilities. All impacted agencies received a notice of application for the amendment, and no comments in opposition were received. Desired pattern of growth. The proposed master plan amendment to establish a land use category of industrial is consistent with the existing regulatory zone of industrial on the subject parcels. Any future industrial uses would be subject to standards required in the development code as well as the Verdi Area Plan. With that, staff is recommending that the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained as exhibit A to the staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in Master Plan Amendment Case Number W M P A twenty-two dash zero 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 five. Is further recommended that the Planning Commission forward the master plan amendment to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners for their consideration of adoption. With that, I have also provided the following motion for your consideration, and that concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Courtney. At this time, I ask, is there any, ladies, is there any public comment in chambers or via Zoom? This is Commissioner Doncic. In chambers or via Zoom for this item?
I do have public comment in chambers. First, I have Jill Dobbs, bowled by Paul McNeilich.
First, I have Jill Dobbs, bowled by Paul McNeilich. If Jill Dobbs is in, oh, perfect. So, of course, I was trying to pawn it off to somebody else. Good evening. Wow. It's like the voice of God up here. Jill Vikina Dobbs, for the record, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. I am a lawyer licensed in both the state of California and Nevada. I run a local nonprofit organization, and most importantly for tonight's topic, I live in Mogul. The parts of this that I really want to focus on are, I have no idea how county staff was able to make those findings, because this industrial, the proposed industrial zoning very much is not compatible with existing uses and very much would impact the health and safety of the existing community out there. Other people who are speaking tonight will get into more specifics and hopefully with some pictures. But if I can ask for a show of hands, how many of you have been to the Mogul neighborhood? Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to get out there. So you should be very familiar with how constrained access into and out of our neighborhood is. The first sign that you see on our neighborhood is Mogul, no services. The 1997 set of specifically states, and I'll read it verbatim, "The Bellely Ranch and Mogul communities are suburban developments, and they consider themselves rural due to lot size and non-commercial nature. These communities have expressed their desires to remain as they are and to remain part of the rural character management area." So even if there was a pre-existing industrial zoning from 40 years ago, it was incompatible with the existing master plan or the regional plan that specifically states our area is residential and rural in character and that we desire it to stay so, that we desire that it stays so. The safety concerns of a railroad crossing that doesn't even have a gate, the intersection of I-80 freeway with the shortest on and off ramps, plus there's like this horseshoe turn trying to access it. They want this to be industrial because they're gonna, they want to propose a big industrial project there. So while we can talk about an unknown future development, we know exactly what they want to build out there, and it's completely out of character with this neighborhood, and it will very much impact the health and safety of not only those of us who live there, but those who will be visiting. Additionally, there are two parks that are being developed on two old historic ranches. There's cultural significance with petroglyphs. There's Native American significance. There's historical significance there. Please don't approve this industrial zoning, because that's the first step to inappropriate development. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Paul McNeilich, followed by Tom Potts.
All right. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Paul McNeilich. I live in Mogul, and I want to try to give a more complete background of these parcels. Can you click to the next slide, please?
You may try it.
It's not working.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
That's all right. So I just want to acknowledge that native people did inhabit these lands, and that was shown on State Historical Marker Number 62, which overlooks these parcels. It's a freeway rest stop. It's a scenic overlook. That sign has disappeared. It was zoned industrial in the 80s. In the meantime, it's been surrounded by residential and open space. It was added to the Reno sphere of influence, which shows that it has regional significance. It's on this important I-80 east-west corridor. In 2017, Reimagine Reno, which was an outreach effort to get feedback from the community about how Reno should look, how the area should look, put a mixed employment overlay on these zones. Next slide, please. The background is that the owner has been trying to do something with these parcels for a while. In 2017, they wanted to get the rollback from Reno, and Reno said no, because Reno was worried about a lack of public input in the county. In 2018, a special use permit went in front of city council and was unanimously denied. Incompatibility with surrounding uses, traffic safety, and to quote one of the city council members, Devin Reese, he said, "This is a challenging piece of dirt," right? Industrial, maybe it's not supposed to be industrial, okay? That's what I want to get across. Enter S3 development, a well-connected developer who is not the owner, is a potential buyer, and wants to make money off these properties, okay? He initiated the, S3 initiated the rollback, which then went through, okay? In '22, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency approved the SOI removal. Next slide. Under the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, mixed employment translates to commercial. This is Table 3.3, okay? If you move on to the next slide, please. The Washoe County Staff Report does not talk about this, and instead references Table 110 from the Washoe County Commission Handbook, which talks about pre-1993 zoning, which would be adopted. Can you move on to the next slide, please? So the staff report also says, "Master plan amendments ensure that the master plan remains timely, dynamic, and responsive to community values." All right? So the question before you, do we revert to pre-1993 regulatory zone of industrial? Or do we take this chance to reevaluate what happens with these very important parcels? And look at, what are the values of the community? What would be best to go in here? Or should we revert and look at the interests of a couple of wealthy developers and landowners? That's the question, I think, that's before you. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Tom Potts, followed by Callie Britton.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Tom Potts. I lived in Mogul for about 35 years. I was going to give you some information on safety problems in this, but as I look at these maps here, they're just blinds. You don't realize this is a real neighborhood, but the neighbors behind me saying, "We could be in a lot of trouble. The kids play in this area. There's people constantly walking and taking their dogs all over." It's a beautiful spot. It'd be a shame if it was ruined. I can tell you about the railroad, how dangerous it is. I'm a brakeman for a railroad in Sacramento, so that is a transcontinental railroad moving right through there, within feet of this project, just a few feet. It's so dangerous, and to have big trucks in that area, and it's a blind corner, when the gates come down, when the trains are coming from the west on track number one, there's only six seconds between the time the gates are down and the train rolls through. That's only six seconds. If you don't get out of the way, that train's going to go through you, and it won't stop for about a half mile. The other problem that we have that's really even worse is the traffic underneath the freeway, because when this was originally designated as industrial, there was no Somerset. Now, there's a big Somerset. Unfortunately, the people in Somerset, when they're coming from California, in order to get back to their house, they have to use our exit. And it's a very sharp exit, and it's only approximately 300 feet before they get near and have to get on the freeway. And it's a huge problem, because what's coming up next, if they don't merge in correctly, is a two-lane bridge that they have to make that. You're opening yourself up for a huge wreck in that area. It's just not compatible to have all those trucks with all the children playing in the area. And I think that if you just try and consider it, what type of place it is, I think you make the right decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Callie Britton, followed by Karen Niehold.
Hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay? I don't have a real formal speech with respect to this. Everybody that's come before me has really kind of stated what my concerns are as well. But as a 20-plus-year resident of Mogul, I do want to make sure that my voice is heard as well. I don't think that commercial is the right zoning for that area. It's not in line with the rest of the area and the uses that are currently being, or the property is being used for. On a personal note, we talk about those safety concerns, and not just that little area underneath the overpasses a problem, or the on-ramp and the off-ramp, but we also see traffic when I-80 is closed due to snow or what have you. We see semis coming up to our roads because they're looking for another outlet. That in itself is a problem. There's nowhere for them to turn around. There is no outlet, and every time we increase that use of that area for that type of traffic, we increase that probability, and then we have problems in our neighborhoods. And I've seen that over the 20-plus years over and over again. So I am with the rest that have spoken here. I would hate to see that we would move forward in that fashion. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Karen Niehold, followed by Barb Rafine.
Hello, my name is Karen, and I'd hold for the record. I just want to recall in your head that map with all the white on it and all the green on it and that little chunk of red in the middle. The city council already voted on this parcel in 2018 and denied the previous development plan. The latest city of Reno decision was only about fire service, and I believe there's a fire service agreement, so that maybe shouldn't have been the only point of decision. Also, we are told that the developer is, the sale is contingent on getting it through to the county. So to me, this feels like the kid going to one parent and getting them saying no, and then going to the other parent to get a yes. So if the city won't say yes, then we'll go to the county. There's not, again, there's not a single illustration in the staff report that shows the intersection that we are most concerned about. And I believe one of my following citizens are going to be able to show you that. In my opinion, the staff report was written from the point of view of the developer. It could have been rewritten from the point of view of the residents and still held water. The parcel should have been rezoned years ago, when the development in the 80s of all the residential parcels north of the highway, that's when past people should have looked at that parcel and said, "We've got to do something different with it." Unfortunately, it slipped everyone's mind. I disagree with finding two, compatible land uses. The immediate adjacent existing land uses are not the only concern. It is the area's land uses. Our safety is in jeopardy, and finding two does not work. The development is incompatible with current land use, and our safety is threatened. We have proposed trailheads from the Washoe County Parks Master Plan, page 45. The Tahoe Pyramid Trail, which runs through this intersection, we have pedestrians and truck traffic do not mix on the narrow rural roads. Traffic studies are not including the pedestrians and their dogs and the bicyclists. We can't change the underpass. We can't change the entrance to I-80 West, which is quite dangerous. And it would be severely difficult to change the five-way intersection south of I-80. I also disagree with finding four. It feels like the impacted agencies didn't include the neighborhood. During your discussion, I would ask that you remember all of the salient points, and if you have questions, also consider asking the neighbors as well. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Barb Rafine, followed by Lori Leonard.
Hi, I'm Barb Fenny. Nice to match the faces up with the emails while this time. I'm here to talk to you about this nightmare of a project that has been ongoing since It's up, it's down, it's up, it's down, and we have been through it, and now things are repeating with it going to the county. First of all, consistency. The developer has not been in compliance with neighborhood meetings, and from 2019 has been inconsistent about informing Mogul residents of changes. Not held neighborhood meetings, nor notified Mogul neighbors by law of a few public meetings in a timely manner. Mogul neighbors have done this notification. We have actually called, when it was in the city, we did that job. We notified neighbors, and, you know, it just goes on. I'm giving you some documentation on the development code. All of you should have copies by the end of this meeting, anyway. So I'm not going to read all that to you, but access to residential streets. Truck route traffic shall not have access to a local street that primarily serves residential uses, with the exception of approving emergency access routes. So that Fourth Street extension where they come off of the freeway is our main road in and our main road out. And so there's a big problem there. Traffic reports. We have not seen a traffic reports. I understand they need to be handed in with applications. Improvements. The Mogul neighborhood has not been informed of improvements, changes, or alterations to plans. We do not see a truck route delineated on the maps provided with the S3 development for ingress and egress and traffic flow up and down Mogul Road. Suitability. This site is not suitable or compatible with the surrounding 94 acres of open recreation space, two railroad tracks with four railroad crossings, two that are not gated. It is not suitable with the two approved Washoe County trailheads. The developer has not discussed safety hazards. I have a map I've sent out possibly to you folks with 20 safety hazards in that immediate area of Exit 7, the exits and the entrances. Serious safety hazards.
Thank you.
Next, I have Lori Leonard, followed by Emanuela Heller McNeilich.
You should be able to use the clicker now. We figured out the issue.
Okay.
Give it a try.
I will give it a try.
And if you could just state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Lori Leonard, and I've lived in Mogul at 10-265 for approximately nine years. Okay, I guess I'm starting. I'm starting. So literally, as the interstate highway signs state, Mogul is a residential area. It is our opinion that, it's my opinion, that this proposal does not meet any of the five required findings for this. Essentially, there are several safety concerns with this area. Since the original designation of those two parcels as industrial many years ago, this area has essentially been surrounded by residential areas, as is noted on these interstate highway signs. Okay. Oh, no. Okay, yes. So there's over 400 households accessing their houses through one exit ramp, on and off, and that's also how people are accessing the public open space, some of which is owned by the Washoe County and is in the midst of being developed further for trailhead additional trail access. So this new traffic for connecting to recreational space is in the works. So in terms of it being appropriate for the existing land uses since its original designation of industrial, it no longer fits that. Industrial may have fit when Reno's city limits were much further away, but again, now Reno is literally surrounding these parcels. From the Reimagine Reno, oh, gosh, I'm really behind, survey, the community members were stating safety is important, sense of community is important, ease of driving, low noise levels, access to outdoors, these are all important things, and such an industrial development in this area would take away from all of these things that were determined by the community at the request of the Reno community and Washoe County on a greater level, that it is not conducive to these things. So also, the community vision stated, "Looking at Reno and our area as a base for outdoor recreation." What this location really is, is access to residential area and it's access to the areas that have been protected by the community. So you'll frequently see people biking there. What many people have noted as the area of concern is this intersection. And I wanted to make sure this video was played, because this is where all truck traffic would be going. This is also where people are walking and biking, and it goes right to the two railroad tracks. So the existing Washoe County parks exist across these two sets of railroad tracks.
Thank you.
So if... as people are trying to access them, they're going to be...
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Next, we have Emanuela Heller McNilich.
One second. For the record, Emanuela Heller McNilich, dear commissioners, I will talk about traffic today. This is not working.
Okay. Try again? Sorry? Go ahead, try again.
Okay. This intersection is complex, dangerous, and outdated. Coming from the south, you have the right-of-way, but be careful, there are two sets of train tracks with trains coming from both sides. This is a photo when you want to cross there. You don't see into the intersections, and cars that are in the intersections already don't see you because of that hill, that red car. And while you step on your gas pedal to not get stuck on the train tracks, there's a car coming from the south, like this red car, and cutting you off. And also here from the freeway off-ramp, there are cars cutting you off because they don't see you coming there. So we would have additional industrial traffic here coming from Mogul Road and going in and out from there. Oh, my God. So this would... this industrial traffic would just be detrimental. So the red arrows would be the additional industrial traffic there. But nevertheless, we have the Tahoe Pyramid Bike Trail going through. We have a bus stop there, and we have pedestrians. I mostly want to talk about the westbound on-ramp, though. As we know from the Ashtoe Green Book, this is not working. On-ramps have to have a minimal length of 300 to 500 feet. This one is only 230 feet long.
You have to go slower.
Oh, okay. And if you plug in your numbers, because you come from a curved on-ramp and you're on an uphill slope, you have to multiply by 1.5. You have just... this on-ramp is just way too short. It should be around 1,000 to 1,680 feet long. This is only 200 feet long, and this is hard for cars to get on. I'm not even talking about trucks here. I'm talking about normal cars. Recommended merging speed on the freeway is 60 miles per hour. If you plug in your number into this formula for a slow vehicle, and I say again, not a truck, a slow car, they merge with 30 miles per hour. This is just extremely dangerous. This is reflected in NDOT crash data. We see three times more crashes after the westbound on-ramp here in red compared to the eastbound in gray. And we will have five times more traffic in the next 20 years on this specific on-ramp. Industrial zoning there is absolutely incompatible with the infrastructure there. This westbound on-ramp needs to be elongated to avoid future liability. The underpass needs to be updated, and this would be extremely expensive. Who's going to pay for this? Probably not the developer. Are we using federal relief money for that? We need an independent, non-biased traffic study before we do zoning decisions. Thank you.
I have no further public comment in chambers.
I do have a few hands raised via Zoom. First up, I have Rachel Solomon. All right. Ms. Solomon, I have allowed you to speak. If you could unmute and please state your name for the record.
Hello?
Hello.
Sorry, my husband found it. Okay. I just want to say that as a mother of a nine-year-old and an eight-year-old who walked to the school bus and ride their bikes underneath that the freeway overpass right there where the trucks would be driving, I feel very uncomfortable with the idea of industrial anything going into that spot. And I don't agree with the finding that says that the welfare of the community won't be affected, because it most certainly would be affected if there is more traffic coming through our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, I have Lori Canepa Bomberger. I'm going to allow you to speak. If you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Yes, this is Lori Canepa Bomberger. To all those that are listening and staff, there are actually nine homes that are to the south of the project. It is not an undeveloped property. County staff is making the same mistake as the city of Reno staff did in the last meetings. Our property alone is 17 and 1/2 acres, which is due south of the project. I am a fourth-generation Nevadan, and this area has been strictly residential and ranchland for the last 102 years. Our biggest concern is obviously the intersection and the safety with the railroad. I would like to add that at our last meeting, NDOT did not even show up to present their side of the safety report. And in my opinion, this is because they know that that intersection is dangerous, faulty, and antiquated. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further hands raised via Zoom.
And I apologize. I do have one more public comment in chambers. I have Garrett Gordon on behalf of S3 Development LLC.
I have an overhead as well. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. For the record, Garrett Gordon, tonight speaking on behalf of the property owner and S3 Development. Let me put a couple kind of facts on the record. One, tonight, we're not here about a project. Tonight, we're not here about a zone change. We're simply here about a master plan designation. And this is a Washoe County staff application, so I'm not even the applicant. They need to give a designation to this property under the master plan. Let's put a couple facts on the record as well. City of Reno considered the project years ago, has nothing to do with this MPA, has nothing to do with S3 Development. We're brand-new to this project. We've already had a neighborhood meeting to get neighborhood input. We'll continue working with the neighborhood. Tonight, we're just here for an MPA. Access to this property does not cross the railroad tracks, does not impede access to the river, does not impact the park's plan whatsoever. A lot of that information is incorrect. There's no historical zoning designation on the property. There's already mini-storage on this site, and the industrial zoning has been there for decades. For decades, it's been there on this property slated for industrial development, or in our case, a very small quaint... small quaint flex space development. As staff says, this proposal is not anticipated to influence or impact any existing or planned developments, because the industrial zoning is already in place. So you can see the overhead here. I think this table, right from Washoe County Code, makes this a very simple decision tonight. This property is zoned industrial. On the right-hand column, industrial. Tonight before you is what master plan category to give it. The only one that's allowed in code is to give it an industrial master plan designation. If you gave it anything other, you'd be creating a non-conforming zoning situation, which is prohibited by code and by common law. So the choice is industrial zoning, master plan designation, and as a project or projects or as any changes to zoning or master plan come forward, which they won't, but if they did, we'd be back before you. So we support staff's recommendation, because it's the only option to give this property a master plan designation of industrial, because it's had an industrial zoning for a long, long time, decades. So again, this isn't about a project. This isn't about changing zoning. It's simply matching up the master plan with the existing zoning. And I'm here for any questions, and thank you for your time tonight.
No further public comment in chambers.
Hearing no further public comment, I will close...
Chair Doncic. I apologize. This is Recording Secretary Lacy Carford. I did just want to reiterate, I know Planner Wyke did comment in her presentation, but we did receive 12 public comment emails on behalf of this project, which were posted to the county website and shared with the planning commissioners prior to the meeting.
Thank you, Lacy. At this time, I am closing public comment. I will bring it back to the Commission for questions of staff, or...
Commissioner Phillips. I have, shall we say, avenue of questions. If this is voted down, what happens?
Play the hypothetical for a second, through the chair. Thank you, Commissioner Phillips.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Trevor Lloyd, Planning Manager, Washoe County. What we're proposing tonight and bringing forward to the Planning Commission is a request for a master plan designation, a master plan land use designation. Right now, there isn't one. The proposal is to have an industrial master plan land use that is consistent with the existing industrial zoning on the property. It's likely that a decision to not do anything or deny the request would likely get appealed to the County Commission, so that they can make that determination. We are hoping to establish a land use of some kind. But keep in mind that before you tonight is not a request for a different land use category. So it would have to... you basically have to go... come back to the Planning Commission. We would have to renotice if that was the intent of the Planning Commission to establish a different category than is currently...
Agendized.
Currently agendized. Thank you. And as was mentioned by Mr. Gordon just now, there... it could be problematic if the Planning Commission adopted a land use category that was not industrial, then we would be, in fact, creating a non-conforming zoning situation.
Then as a follow-up, Commissioner Phillips. What options would the neighbors have if it is already voted in as industrial and it is not fitting to what they want or what could be done? What are their options?
Again, as Mr. Gordon had indicated, this property has been zoned industrial for decades and decades. I mean, probably going back to the 80s, maybe before then. I don't know the exact timeframe. So for that reason, and I do need to make this very clear, the minute that it came back to Washoe County, the applicants, the owners of the property, had a right, per Washoe County Code, to establish or apply for the permits for all of the industrial uses that were allowed under the industrial zoning. So they had that right from the moment that it was rolled back from the City of Reno and brought back to Washoe County. And that continues today, and nothing that this board decides to do at this time will affect that. So they have the right to develop industrially uses on that property right now. So the... in that regard, the options are somewhat limited. I don't know all of the potential options. They could certainly work with the applicant, become part of the process, maybe look at the design, look at what was proposed, and provide options that way. And I know there's always the option that is not the most popular one. They have the ability to purchase the property, and... but again, that's not a popular option either.
Okay, then the follow-up is this. I went out there today, walked it, drove it, to get an idea of just exactly what is happening. And it seems interesting to me that there's already someone in place that will do something, that wants to buy it. Will that come before the Planning Commission again if...
It's not likely that you will see any project come before the Planning Commission, unless there's a desire to subdivide. And that could be a possibility. There was a project that came before the Planning Commission. It was a request to develop the site or grade the site, really, because they exceeded the thresholds for a major grading for a special use permit. So the board did review grading of the site, but they didn't review a project. We don't have a specific project that they were looking at. There was not a traffic analysis at that time either. So in that regard, most of the uses are under Article 302. Most of the uses in that zoning are allowed by right. They do not require Planning Commission review.
Commissioner... this Commissioner Doncic, Commissioner Flick, if I'll just go down the line.
Go ahead. Thank you. Mike Flick, again. So let me try to clarify this in my own mind. What this action is... what started this action was simply to bring the zoning in compliance with the master plan or the area. And so if that's the case, and you already have the industrial zoning online, they could put a project, say, for grain elevators or whatever in that area where you got the rail line and the freeway access and what have you.
Commissioner Flick, could you please speak into your microphone? Commissioner Flick, thank you.
I'm sorry. As I was saying, the action before us tonight is simply to bring the master plan and the zoning in compliance. And that's why staff is doing this instead of the applicant, because that's a staff function. But with the industrial currently existing for many years, I've been told, they can go ahead and come up with the plans and pull a permit for a lot of things right now without it being consistent. Is that correct?
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you, Commissioner Flick. Yeah, everything that you mentioned is true, is consistent, yeah.
So the only way to change this would be to change the master plan.
Commissioner Flick, if you could sit towards your mic, please.
The only way to change this would be to change the master plan, so it's not rated or defined as industrial.
Thank you, and through the chair. It would likely require both an amendment to the master plan land use as well as the regulatory zone map.
Okay.
Commissioner Chesney?
I just have some comments.
Into your mic, please.
Hello? Okay. I understand all of the public comment, and I want you to know that I've followed this project ever since they tried to roll it, since we rolled it back. I also sit on regional, we looked at it there. I understand the traffic problems. I understand the residential. This is sort of like, and council's not going to like this description, but it's sort of like a turd in a punchbowl. It's an industrial project that sits between open space and access to the river, residential all around at the city of Reno's encroaching closer and closer. all around at the city of Reno's encroaching closer and closer. But the owner does have a right to develop their property. And our hands, it appears to me, are pretty well tied at this stage in the game. I would think that when a development is proposed, that they're going to have to do a community meeting. You folks, that's the sword that you want to fall on, is it, at the community meeting when there's a proposed project? We really, at this stage in the game, don't have anywhere to go. But I want you to understand that we're not blind to the issues that you have out there. And I also understand the access. NDOT has no intention of redesigning that intersection. So, it's not that we, at least I don't understand, it's just that we don't have any direction to go. So, that's my comments.
Commissioner Doncic, for the record, I have read every document here. I have been going through that area for many years, and I understand the traffic concerns and the safety concerns, but I have to concur with my predecessor in that today, we are only talking about the sphere of influence change going from city of Reno to Washoe County. We cannot make any land use changes. It's not within our authority to do that. So, all we're here for tonight is bringing it out of Reno into Washoe County. And essentially, it's already there, where you just have to bless what's been done.
Chair Doncic, this is Commissioner Chivalecik. For staff, I know she's here somewhere. When you were talking about compatibility or proposed master plan land category with existing master plan categories on adjacent parcels, it's on page five of your report, when you said the compatibility rate is high because of the surrounding area, can you go into detail of what is surrounding the project? I mean, what is being proposed to go back to industrial in Washoe County?
Senior Planner Courtney Wyke, for the record. So, the compatibility land matrix, actually, let me make sure I have the correct term here. This is the land use compatibility matrix, which is found in the Land Use and Transportation element in Volume One of the Washoe County Master Plan. It identifies the master planned land categories against the regulatory zones and then assigns them a compatibility rating. My understanding, and Mr. Lloyd, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the analysis for that is immediately adjacent to. And so, when we're looking at the matrix that was provided within the staff report, it is only identifying those parcels that are immediately adjacent to, which are zoned, public semi-public facilities within Washoe County. And then, there's a good portion of the site, oh, there we go, that is city of Reno jurisdiction that have a mixed employment, and that has a compatibility rating of high. And then, there's the small portion there on, let's see, the left or the westernmost side parcel that does have an immediately adjacent designation of suburban residential, which is identified as low.
Okay, so, just for clarification, that pink area right there is Washoe County, and it's suburban residential.
Correct.
All the hash marks for the larger portion of that two-piece parcel is surrounded by the city of Reno.
Correct.
City of Reno requested, or turned, just did a rollback and gave it back to Washoe County because of all the conflict that city of Reno was facing with trying to develop this property. Would that be a true statement?
I would not be the best to answer that question because I was not at Washoe County at that time.
Secretary Lloyd.
Yeah, historical.
And I was reading it from the background in the report, so.
I don't know if I can answer that accurately either. I was not part of the discussions when it was in the city of Reno. I know that there was a lot of concern and a lot of opposition.
And it was denied. So, okay. So, I'm suspect that a property that city of Reno could not come to agreement with, and it feels like our friends at city of Reno just said, "Let Washoe County deal with this problem now." And that causes me a great deal of consternation. In terms of, I echo what my fellow commissioners have said, is based on the role that we have to serve, the only thing we can do is review what is allowed by Washoe County, which is industrial. In terms of, this is really hard to get wrapped around because of the history that has been around this project for so long. And, Secretary Lloyd, in terms of our jurisdiction, our, what is mandated to us to perform as appointed planning commissioners is to review the facts, and I guess this would go to council as well, is to review the facts and the situation that is before us. And a rollback, just clarify for me, a rollback requires that we find the designation within our jurisdiction, which is compatible for this piece of property.
That is correct. And if I may, there's a number of factors that we look at when analyzing and making that determination in terms of what is the most appropriate land use. And so, clearly, Courtney provided a staff report that was very clear in terms of what role the planning commission has and what you're looking at to make that determination.
Yeah, and like I said, this map, I mean, just this little tiny corner that buffers a Washoe County land use and then surrounded by city of Reno. I do want to go on record, as I don't appreciate being lectured to about what my role is as a planning commissioner to understand master plan amendments. I'm fully aware of those. That's all I have.
Commissioner Nelson? Commissioner Doncic, for the record. Commissioner Nelson?
Commissioner Nelson, for the record, I completely agree with my fellow commissioners. Looking at that map, it seems like the planning process between the city of Reno and the Washoe County is broken. For them to be able to kick back a couple parcels, but we're going to keep everything else, in my view, is wrong. I don't think they should be able to do that. So, I don't know how we go about changing that, but I'd start there. That's all I have to say.
Commissioners, before we.
I have a question, too. Commissioner Phillips, being that the immigrant trail goes through here, is there any kind of participation involved with the federal government?
That's actually a very good question. And part of the review with the special use permit heard by the Board of Adjustment was a, and I believe I'd have to go back and look at the conditions, but I believe we do contact the State Historic Preservation Office in Carson City, Shippensburg. And they typically will ask for an inventory. I don't know that they involve the federal government in any regard, but at least there is involvement at the state level.
Commissioner Doncic, for the record. Commissioners, any further questions or anything at this time?
I have one more question. Commissioner Chivalecik, this is, I guess, for you, Mr. Lloyd. In terms of, since this project, I mean, this piece of property has been industrial for several decades, but any industrial development would have to comply with current code? Thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions? At this point, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any motions or vote. Yes, Ms. Gustafson.
For the record? Thank you. I just wanted to remind the commission that in looking at a master plan amendment, Washoe County Development Code, if you're going to adopt a master plan amendment, requires three of the five findings. I think Ms. Wyke maybe misstated that, and so, I just wanted to clarify, three of the five findings and all required area plan findings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gustafson, for that clarification.
And one more clarification. It's a master plan amendment. It does require a supermajority of the planning commissioners on the board.
Yes.
Commissioners, I'm bringing it back to ourselves for, is there a motion? Remember, this is only, as we keep saying, this is only for sphere of influence, rollback for Reno. There is no plan involved for building development whatsoever. This is just that we got the property back from Reno, and we're trying to bring it back in under the current designation from Reno to us. That's all this is about tonight. Yes, Mr. Chesney.
I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission, adopt the resolution contained in Exhibit Eight of the staff report to initiate and adopt an amendment to the master plan as set forth in Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 22-005, having made at least three of the following five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110, 820 dot 15D, and the required verdi area plan findings in Goal 28, V dot 28-1 and V dot 28-3. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendments in WMPA 22-005 as set forth in this staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the planning commission to this effect.
Thank you, Mr. Chesney. Commissioner Doncic, do we have a second? This is Commissioner Doncic. I will second that motion. Do we have a further discussion before we vote?
This is Commissioner Chivalecik. I just support Commissioner Nelson's comment that the system is really, really broken. And reimagine Reno should have fixed it, so maybe our master plan amendment will help fix this.
Thank you, Commissioner Chivalecik. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, motion passes. I believe we've been requested to take a short break. So, ladies and gentlemen, it is essentially a quarter to eight. We'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back. Thank you.
It is, as long as I feel like we presented the appropriate map, we had the side-by-side, everything else is in the record as displaying it. It seems more of an administrative. Yeah. Right. Right. Then we're adopting. Yep. Which is not, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't, I don't need all this.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, at 7:59, and we are bringing, what? We are reconvening the planning commission for May 3, 2022. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, next on the agenda is Item 8D. Secretary Lloyd, if you could read that into the record, please.
This is Secretary Lloyd. This is master plan amendment, Case Number WMPA 22-0001, and regulatory zone amendment, Case Number WRZA 22-0001, for possible, for hearing, discussion, and possible action. To, one, adopt a resolution amending the Washoe County Master Plan Appendix, E Spanish Springs Area Plan Maps, to redesignate four parcels totaling 144.83 acres from rural to suburban. And, two, subject to final approval by the Board of County Commissioners of the associated master plan amendment and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by regional planning authorities, to adopt a resolution recommending the amendment of the Spanish Springs Regulatory Zone Map to change the regulatory zone from general rural to low-density suburban on four parcels. And if approved, authorize the chair to sign the resolution to this effect. Representing Washoe County, once again, is Senior Planner Courtney Wyke.
Courtney, hold on a moment, please. Ladies and gentlemen, I need to ask if there's any disclosures by the commissioners, either ethics or ex parte. This is Commissioner Doncic. Yes, Commissioner Flick?
Yes. Again, my name is Mike Flick. I'm concerned about myself and the location of property that I own within Shadow Ridge. And as a result, my participation in this matter may appear to be a conflict of interest. And as a result of the possibility that it may appear that I can't make an independent judgment that a reasonable person would make, I'm going to recuse myself from the deliberations of this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Gustafson.
Commissioner Flick, a few questions. If you wouldn't mind stating for the record exactly where the location of your property is and why that causes you concern.
The location of my property is contiguous to the Hall Road. So, it could be construed that I may have an advantage in an unclear judgment in how I vote. So, I want the record clear. I want everybody to know about it. And I think in good conscience, I should recuse myself so that there isn't any appearance of a conflict of interest for this fine body.
Okay. And just to clarify, the location of your property would be in the residential subdivision that's directly west of the parcels that are up for discussion today?
Well, the Hall Road is going east-west. The backyard of my property is contiguous on the northern boundary. Northern boundary of my property line, then there's a open space, and then there's the Hall Road.
Okay. And your property is located on the map that's in the staff report on page five? Is that accurate?
Yeah. My property is on the map here.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So, yes, Commissioner Flick would have to, he has elected to recuse himself, so he would have to leave the room for this discussion. And Commissioner Flick will certainly send someone to come find you after this is over and invite you back into the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Flick, for your bringing this forth. All right, ladies and gentlemen, at this point, we are officially opening the public hearing, and we're ready for staff presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. For the record, Courtney Wyke, Senior Planner.
For the record, Courtney Wyke, Senior Planner, here to present for your consideration, Case Number WMPA 22-001 and WRZA 22-001. Okay, some background and a little bit of information on the location. The project site consists of four parcels totaling approximately 145 acres and is located in northern Spanish Springs, east of Pyramid Highway. The subject project area is outlined in red. Currently, the project area includes a longstanding aggregate mining operation known as Donovan Pit, commercial landscape materials yard, and a composting operation. Existing additional uses include an office, scale house, and storage buildings. The five-acre parcel located in the, at the southeast corner of the project area is developed with a single-family dwelling. The Shadow Ridge subdivision is located immediately west of the subject property. Sugarloaf Peak and open space lands are to the east. The Donovan Pit has been owned and operated by the Donovan family for nearly 70 years, and they wish to phase out the aggregate mining operation. And as a means of restoring the site, the applicants are seeking to amend the master plan land use and regulatory zone in order for the potential to develop a future residential subdivision. Specifically, the applicant is requesting to amend the Spanish Springs Area Plan Map to redesignate the existing rural master plan land use designation with suburban residential on four adjacent parcels of land totaling 144.83 acres. This would be consistent with all existing immediate adjacent land designations, as you see represented in the figure above in light pink. The second part of the applicant's request is to change the regulatory zone on all four subject parcels from general rural to low-density suburban, allowing for a maximum of one dwelling unit per acre. Per the compatibility matrix found in the land use and transportation element of the Washoe County Master Plan, the compatibility between the proposed and existing adjacent regulatory zones would all have a high compatibility rating, with the exception of a medium rating adjacent to the general rural shown in green to the south of the project site. The project site is located within the Spanish Springs Suburban Character Management Area, SCMA, of the Spanish Springs Area Plan. The SCMA is the designated area of the Spanish Springs Valley per the area plan. Okay, we'll briefly go into staff's analysis of the proposal now. Availability of facilities. The applicant indicates water will be provided by the Truckee Meadows Water Authority and that sewer service will be provided by Washoe County. Sewer will be conveyed to the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, which is owned and operated by the City of Sparks. The City of Sparks provided staff with written comments outlining a number of concerns and requests for clarification. The letter expressed concerns related to the intensity of the use and how it will impact Washoe County sewer allocation. The Washoe County engineer is confident that there is adequate capacity to serve the future development and that the matter is a technical matter that will be addressed at the time of a tentative map submittal. In addition, the Washoe County School District received a notice of the application and provided no comments or concerns with the amendment. The proposed amendment is expected to have a minimal impact on school enrollment. Traffic and access. Donovan Aggregate Pit is currently accessed via an existing private Hall Road that parallels the northern property boundary connecting to Pyramid Highway. It is estimated that the aggregate facility generates up to 700 truck trips per day currently. Additionally, the public landscape material yard often adds 200 to 300 additional vehicle trips, mainly on the weekends. The preliminary traffic evaluation states the proposed amendment will generate approximately 1,300 average daily trips. These trip volumes will be offset by the reduction of trips generated by the existing aggregate operation. Currently, all daily intersection movements are operating at a level of, level of service of C or better. The proposed primary access to the future development would be via an extension of Horizon View Avenue, which bisects Shadow Ridge subdivision. A secondary emergency access is proposed using the existing access roads servicing the Donovan Aggregate Facility. The area proposed for the secondary access is currently owned by third parties, and appropriate right-of-way will need to be acquired and granted to Washoe County. Additionally, future roadway access must conform to Washoe County standards. The applicant will need to provide, at the time of a tentative map submittal, the proposed intersection improvements fully meeting Washoe County Code and demonstrate that the right-of-way has been or can be acquired. Here is a map of the approved unbuilt development in the surrounding area. I do apologize, as this attachment was inadvertently left out of the original agenda packet, however, was provided as an addendum after the packet went out, and all commissioners should have received a copy and quite possibly, maybe even in front of you on the DS. Both the Nevada Revised Statutes and Washoe County Code require a neighborhood meeting for any proposed master plan amendment. The neighborhood, a neighborhood meeting was held virtually via Zoom on February 23, 2022, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. The applicant provided a thorough summary of the meeting and was included as Exhibit F to the staff report. Predominant concerns surrounded around increased traffic, concerns with access through Horizon View, lack of disclosure by Ryder Homes regarding possible future access through Horizon View, questions about the design of the future development. Additionally, oh, just as a note, 417 notices were sent out for that meeting. In addition to public feedback at the neighborhood meeting, staff received 14 public comment letters predominantly citing many of the same concerns. A copy of each letter has been distributed to the commission and is included as part of the record for consideration in approving the request. I had a feeling I clicked twice. Master Plan Amendment Findings. The staff report provides a detailed discussion and analysis of all required master plan and regulatory findings. For the sake of time, I will not go through each finding and will rather respond to any questions on specific findings as necessary. Here's the regulatory zone amendment findings with staff comments. As previously stated, staff does believe that all required findings can be made for the requested regulatory zone amendment and master plan amendment. In addition to the broader master plan and regulatory zone amendment required findings, Spanish Springs Area Plan has a number of applicable findings required for this type of request. Again, I will not go through each one of them. As you can see, there is quite a few, but we can go through and answer any specific questions related to findings as necessary. Okay. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission adopt the master plan amendment resolution contained as Exhibit A to the staff report with an amendment to the motion to replace the attachment with the correct Spanish Springs master plan map. Staff inadvertently, let's see if it will work, attached a incorrect master plan map here. So as part of the motion, staff is requesting that you make a motion to replace, let me rewrite, replace or reference the map as presented as part of the motion to adopt the resolution. Staff further recommends the commission forward the master plan amendment to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners for their consideration of adoption. Staff has provided the following master plan amendment motion for your consideration with an amendment to the motion to replace the attachment to the resolution with the correct Spanish Springs master plan map as presented. Staff is also recommending the Planning Commission adopt the regulatory zone amendment resolution contained as Attachment B to the staff report and recommend the commission forward the regulatory zone amendment to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners for their consideration of adoption. Staff also provides the following regulatory zone amendment motion for your consideration with no changes. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Courtney. Is there an applicant presentation this time?
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation, representing the project applicant. Also with me is Tom Donovan, owner of the property and operator of the Donovan Pit facility. I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation. The first few slides are going to be fairly repetitive. I don't think the clicker is working.
Okay, go ahead.
There we go. Kind of just a summary of what Courtney has already presented. This is the aerial view of the pit. As you can see, the mining operations essentially consume the majority of the parcels in question, with the exception of the Donovan family residence there at the southeast corner. Horizon View Avenue, as you can see, is stubbed into the property now, and the lots that you see adjacent to, directly to the west, are essentially now built out. That aerial photo, you know, obviously, they only get updated every so often. The homes are within Shadow Ridge are constructed in that subdivision. The final homes are being completed now. Some pictures of the current pit operations from within the pit itself. As you can see, the composting operations and then the mining operations in the background. This is the view of Horizon View extending into our project site. So as you can see, fences back to Horizon View, and that was left open. That easement for the extension of Horizon View is actually put into place with the Donovan Ranch subdivision, which, same name, Donovan Ranch is what's known as Shadow Ridge. So some of you that have been on the board for a while remember that. That was approved in 2002, so 20 years ago. That map, and I'm going to give you some history, and I'll kind of give you some history on that map and how this came to be. So the Donovan family, as Courtney mentioned, has owned and operated the site for nearly 70 years. Shadow Ridge is part of the overall Donovan Ranch project, which was originally put into place back in the 1990s as part of the Spanish Springs specific plan. The specific plan recognized that the pit was an existing operation, was put together with kind of the largest property owners in the valley. So the Donovan family, Spanish Springs Associates, which is Haco on the west side of the highway, and Washoe County. It was a kind of a joint effort. The Donovan Ranch was assigned one-acre density. However, at that time, it was recognized the pit was an existing business, and so that GR and general rural, as it's kind of carried forward, was to allow for the legal operation of the pit. So the pit operates under an existing special use permit. It's a considered conforming use, and that's why that zoning was put into place. However, if you went back and read the specific plan, the long-term vision was to transition the mining operations to residential uses at one unit per acre once the mining, that was the way of reclaiming the pit, so to speak. If you look back through the staff report that was approved in 2002 for Donovan Ranch, it's discussed in there how the density for the pit was not being used for the Shadow Ridge subdivision and was being reserved for the future development of the pit. So it's essentially been on the books for 20 to 25 years. As Courtney mentioned, this is the Spanish Springs Area Plan. The suburban character management area is outlined in black, so the site is fully within the suburban character management area. The master plan designation being requested suburban directly matches that of all adjoining properties. The zoning, same goes with the zoning. So low-density suburban, one unit per acre. In reading a lot of the public comments, there was some confusion, and it's understandable. At our neighborhood meeting, we said that we see this as essentially as an extension of Shadow Ridge. It's finishing off what was originally envisioned in the specific plan. There was a lot of comments that said Shadow Ridge has third-acre lots, so therefore, you're going to have three times the density of what's being presented, and that's simply not the case. The zoning establishes the underlying density and allowed number of units. And if you're not familiar with that process, I can see where it'd be quite confusing. Shadow Ridge is a common open space development, so yes, there are lots well under an acre. However, the overall density of Shadow Ridge is one unit per acre. That's what would happen with Donovan Ranch as well. As I mentioned, proposed land use designations are identical to Shadow Ridge. This request does not grant us an access to go build anything, or a right to go build anything. We will have to come back with a tentative subdivision map before this board, where we will do the full analysis of all view impacts, traffic impacts. Everything that's associated with the project will be presented with the tentative map. I want to stress that the zoning would only allow for up to 144 single-family units. It cannot do double or triple the density as some have perceived. Essentially, this fulfills the original vision of the Spanish Springs specific plan, as well as the carryover in the area plan. If you look at some of the area plan policies, it fully supports what's being requested here tonight. So as Courtney mentioned, the truck traffic currently, on a peak day, there's up to 750 truck trips coming in and out of the pit. So when we say 750 trips, that does not mean 750 trucks. That means one, you know, trip in, a trip out. So essentially, you know, 300 and 300-plus trucks per day, not counting the commercial residential materials yard that is available to access by the general public. We think that the proposed residential land use is much more compatible with the adjoining subdivision than essentially a heavy industrial operation that's occurring today. As the valley has grown, obviously, those land use relationships have changed. The pit at one time was completely out by itself, and now it's adjoining a subdivision. So we think this is much more appropriate, and it is in conformance with all the goals and policies of the area plan. So with that, I'll wrap up my presentation. Tom and I are available to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Doncic, thank you very much. At this point, we open up to public comment.
I have Gwen Reeves, followed by Bill Bauer.
Commissioners, my name is Gwen Reeves. My husband and I live in Shadow Ridge, and we have some concerns about this change of plans and the master plan and zoning. Our community has about 400 units and one road in and out for that area, and that's Horizon View. And it is proposed by the Donovan's application that any new homes that will be built in there will use as an extension, and that is going to be an addition of possibly 300 more homes. Two communities going through that one road to get in and off of Pyramid just doesn't seem right. A safety concern are the hazards of possible evacuations, any emergencies, plus more traffic through our community during and after construction. And yes, the trucks and traffic in and out of the existing mine create traffic on Pyramid, but new homes in place of the mine will create much more traffic and more vehicles onto Pyramid, and they all are proposed to go through our quiet community. When asked why they don't use the road the mine is using, Donovan had claimed that NDOT won't allow that to be a road. So I ask, how can the mining company be in business for nearly 70 years on a one-mile-long two-way road for all the trucks, the customers, employees, for all that time? Mr. Donovan stated in the community Zoom meeting, February 23, he wanted to rezone in order to match Shadow Ridge community. He would not be building the homes, but would be selling to a developer. Any developer will have the option and no doubt will use it to revise the plans and create more units than just 144. North of Shadow Ridge is the large Harris Ranch project in progress with other developers, which is going to add tons more future traffic onto Pyramid. I can't fathom how long it will take to be at the intersection of Horizon View to get onto the freeway with all those homes waiting for all that traffic to pass. A reply that Donovan Ranch is located within walking distance of commercially zoned properties located at the intersection of Horizon View and Pyramid is misleading. The community, the commercially zoned properties at that said intersection are two separate storage companies. U-Haul on 20 acres, Store Quest on 10 acres. We fail to see how it would be in walking distance for future residents when it would be a mile from that intersection to the beginning of the new home sites. There are no other commercial businesses there, such as grocery stores, drugstores, eateries, et cetera. eateries, et cetera. We understand the need for homes in the Renaud Sparks area, but there are way too many underlying issues. We don't.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Next, I have Bill Bauer, followed by Nick Dawson. Okay, no Bill Bauer. Then I have Nick Dawson.
Good evening. My name is Nick Dawson. I also live in the Shadow Ridge development, two houses from Horizon View Drive. I sent each one of members of this planning commission an email with my objections or concerns with this project, mainly its transportation, safety, and security. Pyramid Highway is overloaded, and a lot of the things that have been built out there should have never been built until the infrastructure could have caught up with it. You wait for minutes, sometimes 15, 20 minutes, to clear the signal at Calle de la Plata if you have during commute hours. And coming into and out of Spanish Springs, it's just, it's bumper-to-bumper during those hours. Anything more being added is just more traffic and more congestion. Using Horizon View is the only way to ingress egress out of Shadow Ridge and also the new proposed development is unreal. It's going to create more traffic. It's going to make more noise, the construction equipment, the dust abatement that we've been going through with all of the present construction, as well as only one way in and one way out. They're saying this hall road, that they talked, the access to the Donovan Pitt will be an emergency egress to get people in and out during an evacuation emergency. If they think that's so important, then they need to move their subdivision road up there and leave our end alone. Thank you.
Next, we have Roddy Clu, followed by Brad Young.
Yeah, hi. I'm Roddy. I live in Shadow, Ryder Homes. There's only three things I'm going to say. First, the traffic in and out of that area is really bad. And if you add another house, let's assume it's 130 house per acre, so 130. But a developer comes in, I can divide that into two. So it's 260 plus a 400 housing in one way and one way out. It seems stupid to me. Second, they said Donovan Pitt is not a street, it's an access road, but they have a sign. It's like a street sign. So I don't know if it's a street sign or somebody placed it there. If they're using it in the track for services, that's not an access road. That's a road itself. So if they want to build a house there, they can use that one. Third, Donovan property of Donovan Pitt itself, if you're sticking with the rules and regulations, there were, used to be a treatment plan for water treatment center that Donovan property. It's not, it's not a housing, it's not anything. If we back to, if we want to go back to original requirement of the law, that's a water treatment plant, because everything goes there. Right now, in front of Ryder Homes, there's a water, they're testing for water now. They're building a lot of property around the area. We have Ryder Homes, we have Toll Brothers, we have Lennar. We need water. The, I mean, right now, in my, where I live, I have fake grass. I have zero, I'm doing my best to conserve water. So we need a water treatment plan, and that's the best area for him, because that's where the, all the pit comes in, all the water in all that county area. At the same time, it was designated as a water treatment center. It's not designated for housing at that time, if we're being stickler about rules and regulations. And thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brad Young, followed by Norma Saracino.
Hello, Brad Young, resident of Shadow Ridge and also on the Board of Directors for the LMA. I'll make my comments short. I agree with what everyone else has said before me. But I do, I find it interesting that they keep using Horizon View as their ingress egress. But yet we do have the hall road. Now, the hall road, in my, in my 40 years in a previous career, I've never heard of a designated road used for emergency vehicles. I've never have. So I'm, I'm really perplexed on how that could be designated solely as an emergency, you know, road, when you have Horizon View that is dedicated to the 390 homes that are built in SR 390 Shadow Ridge. So I think that I, I just find that that to be perplexing. In short, it just seems that, again, the 140-plus homes, as the previous speaker spoke, Dr. Ko, there's a good chance that those numbers can be doubled, and that's what we're worried about. So if you look at 2.5 vehicles per household, that's usually the rule of thumb. You're looking at quite a few more cars on a, on a road that is not, you know, we're not marked as a, it's a residential street, is what it is. So you have that many more cars coming down to an uncontrolled intersection with a state highway, 445, that was, the speed limit was changed, from what I understand, about two or three years ago, to 65 miles an hour. So now with the, the new U-Haul plant that went in and the other items being built, we have a 65 mile an hour road, and we try to make left turns going on it. You know, this isn't a sympathy cry, this is very serious. And what I'm worried about is if there's not going to be a signal put in, that's what we've been told, that'd go in up where Harris Ranch, where the other 600 homes are being built, there'd be a signal there because there's a school going in that would go with Pebble Creek, then do we have to wait for one of our residents to be in a fatal collision? Or two, or three, or four, or bad accidents? If, one thing I can tell you, if you come out and you speak to our people at board meeting, at least 200 out of 400 homes would tell you that they're just about mowed down because the car's coming from the north going south. They're not doing 65, trust me. They're doing 80, 85, and that's just the way it is, especially in the morning hours. And I thank you for your time.
Next, we have Norma Saracino, followed by Edward Albright.
Hello, my name is Norma Saracino, and I live at Shadow Ridge. I'm opposed to the Donovan master plan totaling 144.83 acres. They want to change it from rural to low-density. I agree with what everybody else said. Basically, Donovan would end up selling, because he's not a developer, he would sell it to a builder, and the builder is going to rezone it, and he's going to put two, three houses on an acre lot. That is going to have even more traffic, because we're going to have more cars. There's not a signal light to exit Horizon View, so you have all this traffic on Horizon View, or I'm sorry, Pyramid. So trying to get out of there, it's ridiculous. It's just too much traffic right now as it is. Trying to put more houses in and only having Horizon View as an egress and coming into our homes, it's just, it's impossible. It's, it wear and tear, even on the road. Right now, Horizon View has cracks an inch to, I'm going to say an inch and a quarter, an inch and an eighth. And I know I've complained to Ryder. They say that's not the responsibility, it's the county. I've complained to the county, and nothing happens. I'm not the only one who's complained about the cracks on the road. I've lived in Wenatchee, Washington, and they get a lot more snow than we do here in Spanish Springs. I'm talking about feet, five feet of snow. The roads there are nothing like they are in Spanish Springs. I mean, it's, it's just ridiculous to try and put that many homes in, and we're going to have more traffic, more cars trying to exit. We don't have a signal light trying to get from Horizon View onto Pyramid. They say they're not going to put one in, so it's just going to be terrible. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood, and to put that much more homes, the traffic is going to be outrageous. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Edward Albright, followed by Diane Craig.
I'm Edward Albright. I, I'm a resident of Shadow Ridge. I live in the very first home as you enter. I'm the first home on the left. And I'd like to start, first of all, I want to congratulate Tom Donovan right here for the success he and his family have had, gosh, for 70 years. And I'd also like to publicly say that because of his efforts in the last month, he helped solve a major problem of a washout behind my home that went from 15 feet to 45 feet across. And had he not stepped in, I don't think it would have been done by Ryder, so, public statement, thank you. I'm here not to win or to lose something. I'm looking for a little piece in this whole puzzle that maybe we can compromise on. And I'm going to single my efforts on, I'm going to call it Donovan's Road, that real long road right off Pyramid all the way up to the gravel pit. Okay, you've heard it called possible emergency access. Okay, these are just some thoughts I put together, and I want you to think about it, is that I'm glad the report mentioned that 700 trucks a day, 700. That's a bunch, okay? That road was meant for it, okay? Horizon View is not meant for it, but his road is. I want you to keep that in mind, and that's trucks going both ways. So what I'm looking at is, can we do something during the construction phase that allows all the construction traffic to use his road, not the Horizon View road? And I'll give you a couple of examples why, okay? His road has no cross-sections, no, there's no intersections, okay? His road has no school bus student pickup spots. Ours has many, okay? His road, no area mailbox pickup where people are lined up waiting to drop off or pick up their packages on a daily way. No stop sign, okay? There's no houses or garages there where people have access in and out, other than just coming off Pyramid. It's a great place for to have those trucks coming down, it's safer. There's no bicycle access, no ATV. You know, I could tell you that there's no RV access, no boats being pulled up and down that, like there are in Hawaii Horizon View. I'll give you an example, is that I call them limpers, people just like me, old people who need canes and walk. We were inundated a couple of months ago with, may have been 50 cars, 75 cars, and they parked down at the bottom where I live, and they walked Shadow Ridge, they went to the top of it, okay? Well, how can you, are these people supposed, they're limpers, but they walked all the way up Shadow Ridge. Are they supposed to move in and out around all those construction tra, that traffic? That didn't make sense. It could be solved by using that road.
I'm sorry, your three months are up. Thank you.
Next, we have Diane Craig, followed by Michelle Craig. Michael Craig, my apologies.
Hi, good evening. My husband and I live in Shadow Ridge and.
Could you, could you please announce your name, please?
I'm sorry, Diane Craig.
Thank you.
My husband and I live in Shadow Ridge, and I don't have a whole lot of different things to say than other people, but yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned. I mean, when we had this meeting with Tom Donovan, and he's telling us that, you know, that's trying to get rezoned for 144 one-acre lots, and he, you know, they're still guaranteeing that's what it's going to be, you know, we're not going to have more than that. Well, and I don't know that my information is correct, but my understanding is they could put up to four homes per acre, on, 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 per acre. And if that were to happen, that means we would have 576 homes. The second concern is that none of this was disclosed to us when we bought at Ryder Homes. And like somebody brought up, this was in the master plan of 2002. Nobody told us that Horizon View was going to go up, and we live right back there where the construction trailer is, where they're going to put it. So we were told that was never going to be developed. That was all going to be trails, okay? So we were lied to, okay? And that's where, you know, I'm furious, because now we have a nice, we have a really quiet backyard, everything, and now we're going to have construction, and now we're going to have potentially 1,100 cars coming in and out on Horizon View, if I'm accurate, I don't know that I am, about four homes per acre, 1,100 cars. What about, what about, what's the fire marshal going to say to that? If there's an evacuation? I mean, God forbid, if there's an emergency, we're all screwed. I mean, not just us, but everybody around us. You know, to rezone this to low-density housing? No, it shouldn't happen, you know? And it's, I, I don't know what to say. You know, I'm so disappointed in, in Ryder Homes not disclosing all of this to us, and it's, it's just, you know, our community, we all love our community. We all love our neighbors. It's quiet, it's beautiful, and we don't want to see this rezoned. Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Craig.
I have pictures, past packages for you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Michael, for your presentation. I am Michael Craig. I live halfway back on this trail, going backwards. This is 100 feet from the stop sign at the top of the hill. When you come up to the top of the hill, you're looking at basically that you're at the stop sign line. To go up that hill, you're going to have to jog left. That is the road going right up next to the maintenance trailer between the properties. As you're getting closer, you're seeing, you know, that they've already started the fence off, they have a parking lot already for the hikes for Sugarloaf Hill that they've already started developing, plus picnic tables. This is the only place in the entire complex, is at the top of the hill, six parking positions only to go up Sugarloaf, which is in the distance there. Looking back down the hill, if you go from the top of the hill, that is the, the view going all the way down next to the maintenance trailer you can see on the left. As you get closer, you see this, that the actual road is going right through the stop sign. So I am not against Tom. Good luck, you know, have some fun. The problem is, is getting, using Horizon View, there has to be an alternate. There is no way to get to the top of that hill, making a faraway stop, and jogging over into oncoming traffic that might be coming from the left, or excuse me, from the right there, to make a stop to turn down Horizon View. It just doesn't, it's not logical, right? So I'm hoping, you know, that, that you see forth in the logic behind this. But basically, as I said, there's Donovan Pitt Road that is the, the, the big red line here that can be accessed by cutting a road over here and just going up instead of that jog that you see at the top. All these pictures are for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. And if you could just drop those off with me over to your left. Thank you. All right, I do not believe that we have any other public comment in chambers. I do have a few hands raised via Zoom.
I do have a few hands raised via Zoom. Okay, you've got different packets. Right now, okay. For the record, Recording Secretary Lacey Kerfoot, I was just handed the packets for the commissioners, so I'm going to take a moment to deliver those, and then we'll jump into Zoom.
Thank you, Lacey.
Perhaps I can ask you, will take one and pass it down? We'll see. Some steps. Thank you. Yeah, I think we're supposed to take one and pass it.
Take one, yes, take one each.
Did you take one?
No, take the package and pass it down.
Oh, okay.
Pack.
Take that and pass it down.
Okay.
Everybody got a pack? All right.
Commissioner Donchuk, here, thank you, Lacey, for the packets.
You're welcome. Okay, moving into Zoom comments, I have Carol Casper. I'm going to allow you to speak, if you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Hi, thank you, I'm Carol Casper, and I live on Desert Chuckert in Shadow Ridge. I agree with everybody who's spoken, all my neighbors who have spoken so far. We have a great community here, we all moved into this community. The last phase of this community sold, you know, $700,000 to $800,000. So, you know, homeowners have moved into this neighborhood thinking they have a nice, quiet place to live, they have beautiful homes, and, you know, what I'd like to just sort of touch on is that what's left out of this proposal from Christie, the representative from Christie held up a picture that was, that looked as if Horizon View was meant to connect to the Donovan Pit. Well, what's left out of that conversation is an easement was filed by the Declan, sorry, Ryder Homes without the knowledge of any homeowners, without any input, because they are blocking us from being, having any power in our LMA. They are not giving us any protections under 116, and they filed an easement and connected Horizon View to the ridge via our common area. Those, there's two lots there on Horizon View that my house backs up to, by the way, that is, that's our trail. That picture that he held up and said, this is where we're going to connect, that is where our trail goes, that's where all of our kids are riding their bikes, that's where we walk our dogs. Nobody's mentioning that, so I want to point that out to you. And just because that's so easy, those important facts are so easy to leave out, I would just recommend maybe to the, to the committee to maybe take a closer look, because even the aerial view, if a homeowner were to open up this aerial view, and it looks like the existing hall road is going to connect to the new neighborhood, that a homeowner wouldn't probably get involved because they wouldn't think that that would impact them. Additionally, I just want to mention that without any power from our, our LMA, without any power in our LMA, because we are still controlled by Ryder Homes, who won't let us have any access to decision-making at all, because they have 1,000 votes per lot that they still own, versus the 400 for everybody else. You know, it's nice that we do have the Sugarloaf Peak Trail adjacent to our neighborhood, but we have been charged with the maintenance of that trail. So we have a lot of stuff on our plate here, and this is just one of them that we're trying to resolve. I see my time's coming to an end, thank you for your time, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Chuck Harkins. I'm going to allow you to speak, if you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Hi, my name is Charles Harkins, and I live on Vista Park Drive, very, very close to where this new proposed road would go. I'm against this because I can't see having so many more homes at the 144 acres that they have proposed. We do not have one-acre lots, like they said. We have at least three houses per acre in this area. I think there's two homes that are one acres. The proposed Donovan Pit area is going to be accessed by Horizon View Avenue. We bought this in this area because it's quiet, not constant traffic, and one road in and out. 400-plus homes would generate an enormous amount of traffic on the street, not to mention construction and other traffic. Donovan needs to use the road to the north of Shadow Ridge Development, just like it shows in the proposal, not Horizon View Avenue. The North Side Road is currently being used by trucks in and out of the pit, and can certainly be zoned for residential traffic in that area. The Fire Department would obviously think that if we had 700 households trying to get out of here in an emergency, that would be a disaster. So I think they need to have that, the north end available for the new homes being built, at least, and not have these on our area. Larry Peyton is the only person that replied to me, I wrote to all supervisors, and he is the only one that came back to me. 700 trucks? No. That'd be 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, equals 12 hours, equals 720 trucks, that'd be one every minute. That's just not true. There's not that many trucks that are going in and out of there. So anyway, I am against having this rezoned, because I can see that a new developer would definitely come in and rezone it to have at least three or four houses per acre, which would increase the traffic in this area tremendously. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate being able to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Dan Gearhart. If you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record. All right, I will come back to you. We're going to move along to Alan Loffler. I'm going to allow you to speak, if you could unmute and state your first and last name for the record. Alan, are you there? If you could please unmute? All right, I'm seeing no movement there. Try Dan one more time. Dan, if you can hear me, if you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Okay, good. I'm Dan Gearhart, I live in Shadow Ridge as well, and I, I'm with what everybody said here. I don't see why we can't use the Donovan Pit Road to access this community if it is passed. We just would get too much, too much traffic on Horizon Ridge Road, Horizon View Road for the people living there right now. So I'm agreeing with everyone who's spoken so far, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will try Alan one more time. I'm going to allow you to speak, if you could please unmute. Okay, and I'm seeing no movement there. I have no further hands raised via Zoom, but if I may, just for the record, for this project, we did receive 16 public comments, emails in total, five of which were included in your staff report. Oh, I think we have movement. Alan, is that you?
Yes, it is.
Perfect.
Okay, my name is Alan Loffler, and I will be a resident this month in Shadow Ridge. And we went up and just checked the roads that are coming into Playa de, Playa de, oh, Cala de Playa, excuse me. And there's a road that comes into that, which is the Al Caballo, and it goes out towards the Donovan Pit. I'm wondering if that could be something that we could explore and use as a solution for the traffic coming out of, out of the Donovan Development. And then they could use Horizon, there's a stoplight at Cala de Playa, and it would, it would help with, mitigate some of that traffic. And with the new houses and the possibility of, of these, this development being sold and multiplied per acre, I think this would be one way to take some of the stress off of Horizon View Avenue there, or road, and via the possible solution for this whole, this whole situation. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And just to finish, Recording Secretary Lacey Kerfoot, 16 emails were received and distributed to the planning commissioners and posted to the website prior to the meeting.
I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of staff applicant or even members of the public. Commissioners?
Through the chair, Commissioner Chesney.
Commissioner Chesney?
For off-field, to any, either the, the developer or the, or staff, this average daily round trips, you make the claim that you're eliminating 750, but you're actually, if you're going to, if you're going to use the number of 1,300 average daily trips, you're actually adding 550, so that's kind of smoke and mirrors. And I don't, I don't appreciate that in these reports, and I've seen them consistent with this representative in the past. The second thing is-- I'll pass for now, I'll say, I'll save it for discussion with the, with the committee.
This is Commissioner Johnson, commissioners? Any questions at this time? I would kind of, I know we're only looking at the master plan amendment and the zone amendment, but I would like a clarification in the statement that you're using that road now, but that NDOT won't let them in the future use that road for, so I'm kind of confused myself, just on that point.
Sure. Once again, for the record, Mike Riddler with Christie Corporation. The hall road has been there, it's essentially a grandfathered non-complying access per NDOT standards. So the hall road has been there so long that NDOT recognizes it and allows it to continue to operate. However, upon change of use of that property, that will be, no longer be permitted, it does not meet NDOT management access, access management standards. And if I can clarify on, on the truck traffic, our application is very clear that there will be an increase in traffic overall. We wanted to point out that those 750 truck trips, which, which is an accurate number, they have the scalehouse at the pit, so they know how many trucks are going in and out, those will be eliminated, there will no longer be those truck, truck trips on that. So the hall road can be used as secondary emergency access, for like a gated secondary emergency access, that would be permitted per NDOT standards, so that's what we would look at. And I believe, and I would have to confirm, but it could be used for construction traffic as well, because that would be considered a temporary use, but those are issues that obviously would have to be addressed with the tentative map.
Okay, well, Commissioner Donchuk, and just to put something out there for that tentative map, so, the reason it can't be used is it's not up to code. So what if part of your plan is, you agree to bring it up to code to the Washoe County Road to, to cut back on the traffic?
That, that road cannot be brought to code. Based on existing access points that are approved through NDOT, you cannot meet the minimum spacing requirements for that access, is not permissible under NDOT standards.
Chair Donchuk. Commissioner Nelson, so NDOT would not allow a new encroachment permit for that access road?
That's correct. We, I mean, we, we would, if that could be used, it could be improved to a standard, but it's, it's not the road itself, it's the spacing between other existing roads on the highway. It doesn't meet those access standards.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioners?
Commissioner Chaillick, through the chair. So in terms of the proposed master plan amendment, is low-density suburban, which is one acre, one house per acre, and because of the density, I mean, the land use of this, is, that is what it will be, is one house per acre. In terms of, and I know that we only have the master plan amendment and the regulatory zone amendment in front of us, we do not have a tentative map for a subdivision, but in terms of what would come from that, we're all fully aware, painfully aware, of the traffic on Pyramid Highway, and the impact on all of these approved but not yet built, which will also bring in significant traffic onto Pyramid. And that's, and for the public, that's why us as commissioners ask for these approved but unbuilt maps, because we look at future impact. It doesn't, it, we have to stay within the framers of what our job is here as we get each plan in front of us, but that's why we ask for that. And so as we move into whomever would start developing this property, there would be traffic studies with a tentative map. Is that correct, Secretary Lloyd?
It's very likely, and then before we have a project in front of us, there are thresholds that need to be triggered in order to require a traffic analysis. But yeah, so I would need to know what those volumes are before I can answer that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Chair Donchuk, I have a follow-up for Secretary Lloyd. If, another, oh, Commissioner Nelson, another hypothetical for you. If they come in and develop in phases, and so their, their initial phase is under that threshold, and then Phase Two is still under the threshold, but Phase Three tips it over, at that point, are they required to do the traffic analysis?
Typically, when they bring in a tentative map, they will show all of the units that they're proposing. It, it, the phasing typically happens with a final map. However, that's not always the case, so there are rare exceptions where they could phase the, a tentative map type of a development. I, I think at that point, if we're, it really depends. I, I, it would have to be a case-by-case situation, so, but, but if, if we know if there is a, a number of very closely submitted applications that do in fact exceed that number that would require a traffic analysis, yeah, we would certainly ask for one.
I just ask because I've been on the commission now for a few years, and I think I can count on one hand how many traffic studies I've actually seen triggered by development. So that's why I was concerned, because again, you know, there are ways to get around it, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Wait, are, are we going to come back to have a discussion with the, with the commission? When you bring it, when you bring it back? We're still in discussion with staff?
We're still asking, Mr. Donchuk, for the record, we're still asking staff questions and things like that.
Thank you.
Madam Commissioner?
No, we're closed. Sorry.
I'm sorry, we've closed public hearing. Or public comment. Is there any further discussion at this point, ladies and gentlemen? If not, I would close the public hearing, bringing it back to commission for discussion. Commissioner Chesney?
Commissioner Donchuk, I'm, Commissioner Chesney speaking, through the chair. I want to put, I want to put this in perspective for the commission. If you look at the approved, first of all, there seems to be a sense of entitlement that because this project has been going on for 25 years, that this, this should just be a, an easy pass. Well, a lot of things have happened in 25 years. In fact, Highway 445, about a mile to the south of, let's just use, well, Eagle Canyon Four, on the-- Four, on the proposed unbuilt map, goes from four lanes to two lanes, turns into a choke point. And we've dumped and approved, in my tenure here on the, on the commission, 2,463 homes in that area, in that choke point. That doesn't include the industrial developments that Christie Corporation represented on Cali de la Pla, other commercial zone properties that haven't applied for anything yet. And so in this choke point, we're gonna dump another 150 homes, whatever, at this application. And that doesn't include that this is a state highway, it's a destination highway, it's a destination of Pyramid Lake, moving on further north, clear up to the Oregon border. So this Donovan pit proposal is just adding more fuel to the fire. These, this traffic is not going to get better. NDOT has no intention, at least in all the studies, and, and I said on RTC committee that we discussed these, some of these things, has no intention of widening that, Highway 445, even past the Harris Ranch development, which is 610, that they've just broke, well, they broke ground on it, I think they've started one structure on it. The point I'm trying to get to is when is enough enough? There, there is, to me, there is no sense of entitlement, because you own a piece of property, you wanted to continue to make money off of, off of your, your pit for seven or eight years while, while they built Shadow Ridge, and then want to take the pit and turn it into, into a subdivision. I, I just, I don't see the sense of entitlement. And I cannot, I cannot support either one of these. You have to take into consideration the communities that are further, farther north, outside of the TMSA, Truckee Meadows Services area. They're already doing multimillion dollar studies out in the Palomino Valley area to use the aquifer as storage for water for the Spanish Springs area within the TMSA. That'll be a billion dollar project if it gets approved. So we have water issues, we have sewer issues, we have it all. And I, it, it's time to put, it's, it's time to put the brakes on some of this stuff. And so I've had my say, but I do not support this at all.
Commissioners, any further question, any further discussion?
Madam Chair, as a reminder, this is a master plan amendment that does require supermajority, and that would be six members, including the one not present tonight. Because Mr. Flick recused himself, he would not be included in that total. So it would require a total of four of the members voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. So at this moment, there is no further call for discussion. I will put at a call for a motion. Commissioner Doncic, I'm ready to make a motion. But I've got to find out, I have to hold for one moment. I am trying to figure out which ones I disagree with, my points are. Commissioner Doncic, I'm ready to make a motion. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission deny the resolution containing, contained in Exhibit A with the amended map of this staff report to amend the master plan and set forth in master plan amendment case number WMPA 22-000, being unable to make, I can only make, I had to find the third one though, actually I had to make three.
You're unable to make three?
Yeah, I'm unable to make three findings, that being two compatible land use, four, I'm concerned about availability of facilities, and I really do not believe this is a pattern desired growth. So that's two, four, and five. That is my motion. Is there a second on my motion?
Commissioner Chesney would second that.
Thank you. So at this point, we have a motion deny. All those in favor? Are we probably have to do a roll call? Do we, on this one?
I would recommend that you do a roll call vote, and each commissioner please state for the record which findings you can or cannot make.
So if we could start with your, at your end, Mr. Chesney?
My vote is nay. I cannot make findings two, three, four, and five. Are we gonna, are we gonna take?
It's yea, because we're denying. So you're voting four, because we're denying.
Oh, excuse me, yes, I'm, I'm voting four. Yeah, okay. And I can't make findings two, three, four, and five.
Commissioner Phillips?
Patricia Phillips, I vote yea, yes. Again, two, three, four, and five.
I had already stated my record, so Commissioner Chavelcheck?
Commissioner Chavelcheck votes yea. I cannot make findings for three, four, and five.
Commissioner Nelson is a, I, I can make findings one, two, and five.
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that, please?
So I'm a nay. I can find one, two, and five.
So that would be a vote of four in favor of the motion and one against.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. And then we do have the regulatory zone amendment to...
Now, do we have to do that, or because we've denied this one, do we have to do the second one?
I would recommend that you also handle the regulatory zone amendment.
Just give us a moment here, ladies.
Well, I thought we didn't move further.
You want a motion?
Do you want to do the second half?
No, go ahead.
Although we want a clarification.
I'm sorry, is there a question?
So I, I do have a question of clarification, since the regulatory zone amendment is dependent upon a master plan amendment. Why, why do we have to take a regulatory zone amendment vote?
Trevor, do you have a, here, I'll let Trevor answer that.
I think the fact that it's been agendized, I think it would, it, it makes for a clean record. That's the best answer.
It also, well, it makes for a clean record if there, in the event there's an appeal as well. So, I mean, if the, if the board decides not to take any action on the regulatory zone amendment, then that is an option for you.
Excuse me, it was only because in the past, if we had denied the first one, we never had to go into the second one, because it was totally kill, it totally stopped the issue, because you have to pass the first one to be able to go to the second one, so that's where our clarification was.
I'll leave it to the board's, I'll leave it to the board's discretion as to whether or not they would like to weigh in on the regulatory zone amendment or not make a decision on it.
Why don't we just do it, just to be safe?
You good with that?
I'm fine.
Through the chair, Commissioner Chesney. Regulatory zone amendment motion. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, that the planning commission deny the resolution included as Exhibit B, recommending the adoption of regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 22-001. I cannot make findings on the regulatory zone amendment of finding four, five, and six.
Once they get a second?
Is this a vote?
Okay.
Give me a second.
This is Commissioner Doncic, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Do I speak now, or do we just?
However you'd like.
We're doing a roll, so we're doing a roll, so why don't we?
So I'm next.
And then I'll read mine, yes.
Okay. I believe this should be denied because of the problems with number two, number three, number four, and number five.
Thank you, Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Doncic, I will go with, I cannot go with two, four, five, and six.
So the motion on the floor is denial of the regulatory zone amendment?
Correct.
And we do not need a supermajority for an RZA. I abstain. No, it's so I'm getting, okay, I can, I will, so it's motion to, I will vote nay.
Okay. So you're agreeing nay on the motion to deny?
Yes. Because I, yes.
Commissioner Nelson, nay. Do we need to identify the findings, or no?
No. Okay, good. So that was three in favor of denial and two voting nay in opposition to denial.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Both the MPA and the RZA, according to our voting, are denied. Doesn't mean they're not going to appeal to get it through, but... Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that brings the end of...
Madam Chair, Secretary Lloyd, if I can just read the appeal procedure. Most decisions rendered by the planning commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the planning commission and you qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission and mailed to the original applicant and the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and application fee.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, that closes the public hearings for tonight, and we will move on to item nine, and that is chair and commission items. First item, by the way, this is Commissioner Doncic, first item is 9A, future agenda items. Do the commissioners have any items that they would like to request?
Do we need to get Commissioner Flick?
Yes, we do. We have to bring somebody back in.
We're gonna bring Commissioner Flick back in.
Being on that side of the door, I realize, you know? I know.
So Jen Gustafson, for the record, we're just taking a quick break to allow Commissioner Flick to re-enter the, the meeting. Thank you.
And now we're gonna revote?
No.
No, no.
No. Just, everyone stop talking.
No. It would be awful. I know.
I think our transcriber tonight's gonna have a lot of fun.
Is Flick asleep out there, or what?
She's very good at what she does, so she's gonna have fun.
Here he comes. All right, so we'll recall this item, item nine.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's now 9:19, and we are reconvening the commission with Commissioner Flick back in place. And our next item on the agenda, as we said, is item nine, chair and commission items, first, which is a non-action item. First is 9A, future agenda items. Does, do any of the commissioners have any requests? Hearing none at this time. Commissioner Doncic again. We'll move on to item 9B, requests, requests for information from staff.
Commissioner Doncic? Thank you, Commissioner Doncic. This is Commissioner Chavelcheck. I have two items in terms of asking if the planning commission has the authority to recommend a change to a land use category. And the second one is to clarify voting with regards when we get a master plan amendment and a regulatory zone amendment. The, the structure of the voting, just clarification.
Commissioner Doncic, for the record, thank you, Commissioner Chavelcheck. Next, is there no other further requests? Next on the agenda is to item 10, directors and legal counsels item. First is 10A, report on previous planning commission items. Secretary Lloyd, if you have anything for us?
Yeah, I have a couple to report on. You may remember the Article 324 for emergency communications, that went to BCC April 24th and, for a second reading, and it was, was approved. And the other was the Highland Village master plan and reg zone amendment. The, the county commission continued that item to a future date. That's all I have.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. Next item is item 10B, legal information, Ms. Gustafson?
Jen Gustafson, for the record. We do, I do have a quick legal announcement. You may remember there was an abandonment case, Paiute Road, it was the end of a circular cul-de-sac up in Incline Village, Crystal Bay area. I think the board dealt with this back in 2020. And that was appealed from, the, the planning commission approved the abandonment request for the end part of that cul-de-sac. That was appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners affirmed the planning commission's decision, and then that was a further appeal to the district court. And it went through briefing, and then I actually had oral argument in the district court on that a couple weeks ago, and the district court agreed with all of the decisions, the planning commission, Board of County Commissioners' decision, and affirmed that has been further appealed to the Nevada Supreme Court at this point in time. And so we will be continuing to litigate that particular case, but that's just an update for you all.
Thank you, Ms. Gustafson, for the, Commissioner Doncic, for the record, thank you, Ms. Gustafson, for the update. At this point, we move on to item 11. Is there any public comment either in chambers or via Zoom?
No public comment in chambers.
And I have no hands raised via Zoom.
Thank you. Then we're closing public comment at this time. At this time, we'll adjoint a motion for adjournment.
Commissioner Chesney, move to adjourn.
Oh, two. Well, we adjourn. Thank you. Thank you.